I didn't prepare any specific agenda tonight. I thought we would just basically have a discussion if members of the public would like to comment. We certainly can entertain that as well. I don't, I think there are a couple of things that you guys talked about at your Thursday meeting last week. Perhaps we should start just by asking what went on there.
That's a good idea.
If any changes were made to the plan. And we can go from there. I had heard there was a handicap parking.
Right.
Well, that's what we were.
I mean, there was a discussion about, let me go to the.
I thought Doug Cole was gonna donate a million dollars to fundraising effort. That's a different Doug Cole.
Or you can use the thing up top.
Anyway, there was, I got the word that there was discussion about whether or not we could add another handicap parking spot. And so I took a look at the site plan and right here where I just put that little friendly hand, there's a spot there that we could add. It's relatively flat, so we could add an additional handicap parking space there.
That's a good point because Duffy Cumbel was very concerned about that, so I think that would be.
Yeah, I mean, for me, what I took out of last week's workshop were sort of three issues. The park, handicap parking was one of them. The exterior cladding of the building was another, and we know the construction manager is looking at both options there, pricing those out. And then we had a discussion about that. And the third concern that was expressed were the headlights in the house, the parking. And I know that, what's his name, Keith from.
Yeah.
He seemed to, he really liked to have that input, and he seemed to think that that could be solved with some shrubbery or some buffer or something like that. And that's kind of what I took out as far as the criticism moving, not really criticism, but suggestions.
The other thing to add, does this work?
Yeah, you're fine. Don't touch it.
The other thing to add, Will mentioned, even though if we create a second handicap parking space, there's certain criteria that go along with that as far as a van and wheelchair access out of that. But also, you still can have, and they don't meet the same definition of a handicap parking space, but those two lower spaces can be designated for, for people that have impairments, where you don't have necess, you're not necessarily in a wheelchair. So, and they could be labeled as studs. So you could have three or four spaces that would be designated to help people that are handicapped. Some, some, two of them would have to be specific for wheelchair access. But the other two could be specific to someone that had, that was on crutches or.
Will they be labeled as handicap spots or just sort of suggested?
No, I mean, there's, there's, we've done projects where sometimes you'll label something as, you know, over a certain age or single mom. Sometimes you see that at grocery stores too. So you've got flexibility if you wanted to designate a couple additional spaces to try to keep those open for a certain group of people. But to be designated handicap, they have to meet the handicap standards.
That was my thought all along, is I mean, you can put some suggestion signs up just saying, you know, gee, if you can, if you're able, consider parking a few spots down and leave these for, you know, those. But the handicap spots are the ones that are legally, and they're the ones that the people have to have the placard for to park.
Well, getting two of those will be, that'll be a good thing.
Right, and one, and one of them has to be a van accessible space, which is wider. So the second one that we put, put in doesn't have to be quite as big, so.
Yeah, 'cause we'll have the one van right next to the building. Yep, okay. Yeah, that's great.
Does anybody else have any thoughts, comments after last, anybody from the public feel free to come on up to the table and grab a microphone. Comments, thoughts? Go ahead, Helen. Yeah, that's.
Is this live?
Yeah, yeah, that's live, right.
Okay. I noticed in the plans that there are two bathrooms on the ground floor and only one on the first floor. And yet we've got the kids up there, and I know one of the issues that came up last time was you've got 20 little toddlers that need to use the bathroom. Is there any way we could get two bathrooms up there, maybe in that place by the marine room for just the kids?
That's an option, and we can take a look at that. Obviously Ben would have to give up a certain amount of square footage, which he might not be willing to do. But we certainly can look at that option and consider it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I'm hesitant.
I'm staying out of that.
I mean, we definitely have enough bathrooms with, with the three.
I'm just concerned about the.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, they're not, I mean, it, it's weighing a lot of things when we place the bathrooms, more so than I would have thought when we looked at it. So it's not, it might not be perfect, but it's, it makes the rest of the building function a little better. So, yeah, we'll, we can look, though.
And I think the thought on the bathrooms is that there won't be men's and women's, it'll just be.
Oh, yeah, we're, we're just gonna go single occupancy, non-gender specific bathrooms, just to get ahead of any laws that could be coming. Yeah.
And I understand the one on the, on the main level would be handicap compliant.
Yeah.
Wide enough for the wheelchair and the rails and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that one would be a little bigger, I think. Is that one a little bigger?
And it, it has a changing table.
It's got the changing table. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the lower ones are also handicap accessible.
Oh, they all are, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's, makes sense, I guess, so. Everybody have any other thoughts, comments?
Just an update, Ken, that we're meeting with DOT Thursday of this week.
Wednesday or Thursday? I have it down as Wednesday, the seventh. And I went back and I looked, because you had it down as Thursday.
Yeah.
I, I had it at Thursday at 10 o'clock in the morning.
Oh, 10?
Yeah, it's in the morning.
Oh, so I, it doesn't.
They, he originally sent an email saying Wednesday.
Okay, that's.
And then he said, sorry, I made a mistake. And he sent a second email that said Thursday morning at eight, or 10, sorry.
Yeah.
Well, that's likely gonna be a problem. He's not gonna come down.
Oh, because of the snow.
Oh, 'cause, yeah.
That's right.
Will that have passed by then?
No.
No.
The storm is gonna be, it's, looks like it's gonna be here on Thursday.
Yeah, he was.
Thursday morning.
Anyway.
We're supposed, we were supposed to have.
We're supposed to be meeting with DOT regarding the intersection and the MPI funds on Thursday of this week. If, because of the snow, it gets canceled, we'll have to reschedule as soon as we can.
Have we put the application in yet, or is that what this?
That's what this, this meeting is about.
Okay, and they're still giving us the idea that it will go through, the process will be reasonably quick.
Other than that first discussion with David Allen here at the town office and phone calls with Jamie regarding that, they haven't said much else.
Well, that'll be key, if we can have that information prior to the vote, that'll make a lot of people feel a lot happier, I think.
Yep.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty confident we'll be able to have that information before the vote.
Oh, definitely.
Yeah. But whether, whether we have the, you know, we're not gonna have it in the next few weeks, though.
Yeah, I mean, if that meeting doesn't happen Thursday, we'll just hold it as soon as he can come back down.
Yeah, yeah.
And we've, and as, I think you probably talked about it last week, but we've separated that intersection pricing out. So we'll have a.
Right.
A price for that work, which is one of the things that DOT is looking to see.
We've had the one.
Yes, yes.
The one drawing with the pink and the blue and the gray, which I think is, what is it here, number B1? One more over, I think, right there. Yeah, that one. The pink being the library project, which is the.
This area here.
The three million, and then the, the blue being the town responsibility for parking and whatever road reconstruction. And then the gray, as I understand it, is what would be eligible for the matching funds from the state.
Now, we drew those lines, so.
Yeah.
I'm trying to make that include as much as possible, so.
Well, I know, I remember.
I'm advocating for, for the town in that one.
Yeah, well, I remember at, at the meeting with David Allen, he, he seemed to think that it was something that the state wanted to do.
Definitely.
Safety wise, and, and I think he also told us that as these MPI projects go, this one isn't very big.
It's not. It's a relatively small project.
You know, both of those things should work in our favor.
How much support do you think we'll get with, from Dave with the sidewalks for improving sidewalk and pedestrian access around through the village? Will he, will he be an advocate for us in getting them to include that as part of the state's component, do you think, or?
That's a good question. I think that, I mean, they have MPI projects that include sidewalks. I think the, the extent of them is really gonna be the, the big question, like how far out of the intersection? Like where does the intersection begin and end? You know, I've tried to extend it in a little bit, and partly I've shown it the way I have because I want that intersection work to be able to happen potentially before the library project happens. So it needs to be done in such a way that it can be blended back into Lime Rock Street and Russell Avenue, whether or not the library project happens or not. Because if we commit to the MPI project, then, you know, we're gonna have to move forward with it.
Do you, when we last talked, we said we were gonna bring CMP into the, into the fold to start talking about poles and wires. Do you know, has that process started yet?
I got a call and Will Bennett today.
Okay.
And I talked to Mike, and he, his, his contact just came back. He's been out ill for.
Yeah, he got injured, didn't he?
What?
Did he get injured?
No, he had a medical issue, though, but.
Touched the line.
But he's, he's, he's just back, and Mike was gonna reach out to him, 'cause sometimes it's, you know, if you just have somebody on the inside that can.
Right.
Push it along, it's helpful.
Well, they may like the opportunity to clean things up a little bit from their perspective, too.
Well, that's.
That's our sales pitch.
Right, that's the question. It's a little hard to see on here, but, you know, if you go out there, you'll see that there's utility poles and there's overhead power lines going in every which direction. Looking at it now, it's hard to understand how it got that way. I'm sure it was just, you know, somebody needed something here and there, and.
Yeah, they added on.
What's the quickest way to, to get there? But there's a lot of overhead power lines crisscrossing Union Street, Lime Rock. I mean, there's a utility pole right there at the intersection of utility, I mean, of Lime Rock and Russell right here. And you've got, you know, a line going across the library property to the Scott House. You've got a line coming to the library and another line to another pole on the library property. So it's just really a mismatch of overhead wires. We need to get with them to figure out what the best way to simplify all that is and move some of those poles that are gonna be in our way.
Just a question, if I were, in case they don't, in case DOT doesn't go along with the Union Street adjustments to where the sidewalk currently will become parking, what additional cost might that be for the town if we have to pick it up? I mean, I, I think it's a great idea, because as narrow as it is in that particular area, but if, if the DOT won't.
Oh, like right here?
Right. 'Cause you're, 'cause you're adjusting the sidewalk and moving it.
We are, into the.
Into the park.
Into the park a little bit, in order to make those parking spaces safer.
So I guess that section of sidewalk would have to be replaced, 'cause you're not likely gonna be able to move it.
And that's one of the places where you may get a little pushback from DOT. Like they may say, yeah, you can change the, the road, you can change the parking. We'll include the new curbing location, but you're gonna have to do the sidewalk because it's now not in the right of way anymore.
I just say that because if we're in budget session now.
Right.
What is some ballpark-ish figure that we may have to account for?
Yep.
If they decide not to.
I could definitely come up with that. Actually, the numbers I've given you for the, for the parking, I think I was conservative in those in, in thinking. So like in this plan, I was conservative trying to get the DOT to include as much as possible. But when I gave Rick some numbers for the parking and sidewalks, I, I took into account that there's a chance we may not get it all.
Yeah.
So I think we've got it, we could.
As long as you're comfortable, so.
I thought you were saying, you were.
No, 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 I, I think that we're covered.
Oh, okay, good.
So if we can, if we can get this to be part of the DOT project, this is one of those, you know, this is a weird intersection.
Yeah.
And so it's gonna be a negotiation with them on what.
Well, certainly.
How far we can go.
No, it's a great idea.
To make the parking safer, you gotta have a sidewalk to step out of the car onto in those parallel spots.
Well, there's a sidewalk there now.
Right.
Yeah, but it'll be, it'll be gone with the new.
You'll be moving it there.
The problem is, is that section of sidewalk now is not in there right of way anymore. So that piece of it, right where the hand is.
Am I, would I be wrong in, in assuming that you're moving the sidewalk where it starts to become parking? You're gonna continue to put a sidewalk in on the park property?
Right, right.
So there still will be a sidewalk, Ken?
Absolutely. Right now, the sidewalk is just right straight down the road.
Right, well, that's what I'm trying to.
And now it's gonna jog in and come down, so that those spaces are actually out of the traffic and protected a little more.
No, that's good. I just wanna try to make sure that we've got numbers that will help us if we need to be.
CMP wouldn't wanna bury their power cables at all through there, would they? While we have, while we're, we're in there with digging stuff?
Yeah, it's a cost issue.
I know, yeah.
We could potentially bury some of the ones on site on Lime Rock Street, but they typically don't want to.
Now, the shoring up of the stream, is that gonna be part of the library building project? Or is that gonna be looked at at the same time as the parking?
We've actually priced that separately.
Okay.
So when we get the pricing back from Ledgewood, the work to stabilize the stream, we'll have a separate number for that.
It is not part of the library project.
Okay. Thank you.
But can the library project occur without doing it?
It can occur, but it would, it would not be wise to not do it when you have access to it, it seems to me.
I was just wondering whether it would even be permitted if we, if it wasn't done.
Did you get, hear that question?
What was that?
I was just wondering if the building would, building project would even be permitted if that was not done? Whether it had any kind of environmental impact consequence?
Getting the permit for the building will necessarily be dependent on stabilizing the stream.
I see.
So there are no setback issues?
Well, there are. There definitely are setback issues.
It looks close.
It's very close, but you can, the good, I mean, the existing building is right here, though. There's the closest corner right there.
So your kind of grandfather ran on that?
So, you know, they're always gonna want us to move it back as far as possible. But the live, we don't have much room. I mean, there's property line right here, so this building really can't move any further away. Our only option would be to reduce the size of the building. And so I think that, you know, our, we'll, we will need to get an RPA permit from the DEP because of the proximity and the amount of work that we're gonna be doing close to the stream. So there'll be a full permitting process that'll include the location of the building and the stream stabilization. The Army Corps will get involved also because of the work in the stream. So we'll, we'll have quite a bit of regulatory review. I'm relatively confident we'll be able to get those permits, but there could be some, you know, negotiation and additional plantings or measures that they want in order to feel comfortable with it.
So will the permit require the stream stabilization?
Probably not. I'm sorry, Jeff.
But the cost of doing the stream is, would be significantly less doing it before the building is built and they have to go back.
Absolutely. I mean, right now, trying to do that work would be very difficult 'cause there's not enough room between the existing building and the stream to get the equipment in there.
And the new footprint is actually farther away from the stream in most respects, it seems to me.
In most respects, yeah. There's only, you know, right here.
That one little corner there is about the same.
And we really haven't worked out all the detail on what this outdoor area is going to be. And so that may be a spot where we need to, to pull back a little bit and, and stay a little further from the stream. And we'll likely try to include some plantings on the uphill side of that rip wrap. But right now, that stream, if anybody's been back there, used to be, have basically a vertical wall on both sides of it.
Concrete?
And on the, ah, it's stone.
Stone, yeah.
On the library side, some of that's caved in. And so that now impedes the water flow down through there, and which is one of the reasons why the neighbors on the other side, the Youngs, have trouble sometimes with flooding. And so because that stream channel isn't a natural stream channel anyway, I don't think we're gonna have any trouble getting permits to, you know, cut that vertical wall back, slope it, give us a little more width in the bottom of that channel, so that we don't get the restrictions that we have now. And I think it's, I think we'll be able to show that it's an improvement, especially if we show some additional plantings and landscaping and, so.
Good, Helen?
Quick question. Any, any possibility of culverting some of that that's closer to the library?
Yes, but I'm not sure there's a huge advantage to it, other than you can cover it over. But both the DEP and the Corps are always advocating not culvering when you don't have to. I mean, it is a stream, so it would mean that you're basically eliminating a section of stream, not, not what they prefer. It's not to say it's not possible, though. We've certainly done it.
And doesn't, it goes under the road and under, under Matt Simmons' old house, right?
Yeah, yeah. There's quite an interesting, yeah. I mean, you've got DOT piping and catch basins all on Union Street. They all come through the library property to a basin right here that connects the stream. And then those go across the street and then right through Matt Simmons' house, and then they dump down into the harbor. I think he may even still have a glass floor so he can watch the water go.
Oh, really?
Put it in back.
Wow.
Yeah. It's pretty wild. There's a lot of water that runs through there.
Any other thoughts, questions, topics of conversation? If you could come up to the mic so we can all hear you, or the folks at home can hear you?
I spoke last week to the issue on the butter with all the light shining into my yard. And I appreciated the response I got. I found it very helpful, but not very specific. So I, this, this is such a major negative impact on my property that I can't afford not to be vigilant about being involved in and being aware of, like, what's gonna happen. 'Cause to say, well, we can put some shrubs up is, well, it sounds good, but it, knowing from being on the inside of my home, a few shrubs really isn't gonna solve it. So I just would like to know what the timeline is, so how I could be involved. Because I'd hate for things to get to the point of like, oh, well, you know, that ship had sailed and it's a little too late to have an impact. I'd like to be assured in a real specific way that I could be involved in conversation and awareness and understanding around the planning, because it's, it's such a substantial impact for me. And at this point, you probably don't know, but I, but I don't know either, so it's.
Well, you're certainly welcome at all our workshops and meetings. And I think that, but I think I, the, the fellow who was here last week from Terry Dewan's office seemed quite pleased actually to have your input.
Right.
And so I think that he's gonna take that into consideration as he goes through now exactly what he's gonna do. I'm not a landscape architect, though. I don't know, but, but I think the concern was heard.
Yeah. I certainly, I certainly felt that too, and I appreciated that, and I, I've left him a voicemail message. But I, I guess I just wanna know, is this something that will go into a planning phase in six months or after the vote, or?
Right.
There's gonna have to be a lot of change in height and a lot of.
Key, Terry Dewan's office been hired as the landscape consultants, and they're working with Will Gartley. But there has been no landscape plan developed for the project until after the project's approved. But I, I did speak to him after the meeting about your concern, and we, we talked about not only plantings, but building a berm that would be in front of the parking. So you wouldn't have to rely just on, on the planning, but the grade would be raised up so the lights would, would shine into a berm and not be, do you know what a berm is?
I do know what a berm is.
Yeah.
I've been looking at this. It just drops off so dramatically. It seems to be able to get parking in there now, I think there's gonna have to be a substantial fill put in and on how you could berm on top of that, because it drops off so radically.
That is something I don't know, but he did mention that. And, and he can, he can with a plan fully screen any lights that would affect your property. But those plans won't be developed until the project's approved. And I think there'll probably be some workshop sessions where he'll come up and work with everyone.
Those all, those all get announced, they're all posted on the website?
Yeah.
Yeah. So you, you can be involved in that process, and I know he's interested in making that.
Yeah, he was very receptive, and I appreciated that, but I just don't know quite what that means and what the timeline on that looks like, and I.
Well, I think you have to.
I'm not always so good with the details, so I think I better get it.
You have to vote in approval of the project, and then.
You're safe till June. You can relax till June.
I don't know.
If I can put in a plug for the livestream, if, what, what you can do is sign up for the livestream, follow the livestream, and you'll automatically get an email for every time they put the select board or Jeff posts a meeting. It will tell you, there's a meeting on such and such a date and what the topic is. And you'll get an email about it every meeting, and with a link directly to the.
Would it be appropriate, but I called this gentleman, I'm sorry, I forget his first name. I had, he gave me his card, and I left him a message. And, 'cause I said to him, would, it might be helpful if you came to the property and you could look from the vantage point out. So we could, is that an appropriate thing to do, like to get involved at that level?
Feel free to contact him anytime you want.
Okay.
We've, we've had meetings with the neighbors behind the public safety building before, which Rick can attest to.
Yep.
And we've made changes to the lighting there that still did what we needed to do for the building and the security of the, the items in it and around it, but yet didn't affect them as much as the other lighting. So we'll, we'll do what we need to do, and I still have that money, by the way.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So can you just remind us, is, is there a date set for another conversation like this that we could have with some cost numbers? 'Cause it's just so hard to go very far at all with this discussion without.
March 26th.
So, and can we expect that at that meeting, we would be able to break out elements of the project? Like if it looked like the hardscaping was just maybe something we needed to rethink, would we be able to break out the money for that?
I get the sense that from, from Ledgewood, we're gonna get a very specific cost breakdown with a lot of different divisions in it. So I think, yeah, we'll be able to look at various different things and, and see that, you guys know better than that.
We've, we've given them quite a bit of information on how we wanna break out different things so that we would have the flexibility, once the numbers come in, to, to juggle things around. But if we didn't ask for one that we need to, they can adjust. So, I mean, all we need to do is ask them to break out a, a specific thing, item, and, and it wouldn't take them very long to do that, so.
'Cause it's not like, I mean, there are a lot of things to talk about. I just feel like it's sort of fruitless to talk about it without knowing.
You're right. I mean, that's, that's the next step, is to get the numbers, yeah.
And one of them is, you know, one, I, I would anticipate that, you know, there's gonna be some, not sticker shock, but sticker, you know, impression. And one of the questions may be, what are some things that we could maybe defer till later? Or, you know, you know, not do right now, but do later, and what might that cost? Or what might we end up deciding we want included in the project that is pitched for the bond measure, but then might have some other things that could be done depending on a donor.
Yeah, that's exactly the conversation that we're gonna have to have when we, when we get there.
I'm hoping we can have that conversation then.
This has been sort of the easy part, if you can believe it. But you're right, when those numbers come back, that's when things are really gonna get interesting.
I'm familiar with that from the last time, by the way.
Yeah.
And I just, you know, I'm happy to sit here this evening, but I just don't really know that we can talk about very much.
Well, but we're just trying to get it just off from the community.
That's, that's more than anything. It's just a chance for everybody to digest what they heard last week and come back with any comments that they have.
Yeah.
And I don't know that we're gonna be here deep into the night tonight, but that's just another chance for people.
We'd rather have more of them with little pieces that were talked about the last meeting and get them cleared out of the way, so that we don't have a bunch to talk about all in one evening, I think, was my take on it.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to, to bring up or talk about? Very briefly, I can mention that the fundraising group has been organized and is beginning to start to do their work, so that piece will be working in parallel with what we're doing. Doug and I kinda went out and recruited a few folks to, to get on that committee, and then we are stepping away because it does need to be truly a private fundraising effort, and so they're getting to work. So if you're interested in participating in that, you can just get in touch with us, and we'll steer you in the right direction. But they, that group is, is very enthusiastic right now, so that's good news.
A question about one of the abutters, did, did the Scott property end up changing hands, or?
I don't think so.
Still there, I believe.
Yeah.
Speaking of one of the abutters, Richard, you, have you got anything? I, I see you chewing over there, but... Well, I just, I would rather ask now than to have something come, come later on.
I mean, I think, you know, and obviously, the, the one real concern that I have is that 15 parking spaces into the park. And wanted to, you know, I, I will be asking, I'm eager to see the cost of that, those 15 parking places. And, and I've said in a number of different junctures, where's the data to support the 24 parking places that we're trying to create? And I've lived there many years and seen how many cars are parked on that street for the library, and you're telling me you're gonna have double, are you gonna have double now, or triple the number of people coming to your library every day, all day? Is that what's driving this? Historical records support 24 parking places being created at what cost to landscape, to green space, to dollars? Those are, those are some of the things, that's, that's what I'm focused on, me personally. And that, what's the net gain you're getting in parking? How many parking places do you have right now on Lime Rock Street? How many parking places will you have when you're finished? And at what cost per additional parking spot? And I just was brought up, is this something you need to do right now? Or might you, you know, I, I really appreciate the fact that this has been broken into several projects, and that the library itself is a project. And that, that if we love that library and we can support that library, we can vote for it and deal with some of the other issues as other issues. And I, I really applaud that. That's really makes me pleased to see that it is being conceived as different components, and that we can evaluate then the cost of those components as they come, rather than as one huge project. So, those are, those are my thoughts.
The, the parking and intersection improvements will be in this year's annual budget. So that'll be voted on at town meeting this year in June, in a couple of months. And my only other comment, I guess, on parking is, we can count spaces, but I think you also have to look at quality of spaces and perception of quality of spaces also.
I mean, I can definitely say that I'll fill those occasionally. But I'll, I'll have those filled a couple times a week. Right now, I mean, at the building that we're at right now, we, I mean, it's not all the time, sometimes it's empty, but there are, there are definitely times when we have programs that we'll fill 20 parking spaces.
How many times have you had 20 people parked in that parking lot in the last year?
Oh, over where we are at?
Yes, yes.
Oh, I would say almost weekly we can come.
What day?
Um, it depends on the program and how many people show up.
Okay, but what days typically do you have 20, 24 people parking in that parking lot?
Well, it'll depend on the program, so Wednesdays sometimes.
Okay, but what days, though?
Wednesdays, Saturdays, random days, sometimes...
You have record of that, Ben?
No, I have not taken statistical...
Okay, would you please?
We have looked at it, and it's not as easy as...
Ben, I've been counting the number of parking, the number of cars in the past year, okay?
At, at my, at the library? Oh, well, then I'd like to see that.
I do have records, okay?
Oh, okay.
So I would like to compare your records to my records.
Okay, I don't have records.
I, I wish you would. It seems to me if you're demanding, you're really seeking 24 parking places, you might have data to justify that you need 24 parking places. And 400 people come to the Opera House regularly. Somehow they park. And so we have 24 people that we can accommodate in the space that we accommodate 400 people on a regular basis? And I guess, I mean, the other question I would have of that, of that parking space, is that intended to be restaurant parking space as well? Are you now trying to accommodate the restaurant owners or the restaurant attendees? And might we see then Beth having lights in her, you know, 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night with restaurant owners, or restaurant attendees coming to those parking places? I mean, is what, is that part of the reason, the rationale for why we need that parking?
Are you looking at me to answer?
Yes.
Yeah, we can use every parking space we can get in the village, particularly as the village gets busier and busier. So, as you said, when there's 400 people coming to the Opera House, they manage to park, whether they, they're parking safely...
Legally.
Legally. Whether they're parking safely, legally, is another question. But having good quality parking, whether it's for the library, whether it's for events that are going on here, whether it's for things that are going on in the other, you know, in other parts of the village, you know, good quality parking spaces are premium, and, you know, every one of them, I mean, there's a cost to them, as you said.
Probably seven or eight years ago, Tom Ford initiated, you know, or it might have been at the beginning of your tenure, Rick, there was an initiative by Tom and myself and others to look around town to see what we had. And we already knew, I mean, I believed it to be insufficient, and, but it was very difficult to find places because of the constraints, you know, here and there. I'm, I'm glad to have the, the widened road, if that happens, on Union Street, because that's been a disaster for, forever, but you can only go up so far with that, because the sidewalk is in everybody else's front yard. So it's not, I, I would look at it as more than just for the library. I think it would, would help the town as a total, whether it's the restaurants down the street or the Opera House. It, it'll just give a few more people a safer opportunity to, to get someplace downtown.
But, but at that point, you're bringing significant, sort of laid-out, sort of activity into a residential neighborhood, too. I mean, normally you don't see parking for restaurants in residential neighborhoods.
My recollection, I think, just doing off the top of my head, from your driveway down to the fire hydrant, there's probably room for eight or nine cars. So you're increasing the eight or nine that are there now, able to be there now, up to 14.
14. So you're getting...
You're adding it...
Five more places.
Right.
And at what cost? Both, both what costs money and what costs aesthetically to your public park and to your neighbors.
But they're also safer, they're safer parking spaces, because they're designed to be parking spaces, not sidewalk, and they're safer, flatter, more accessible spaces than, you know, parking on the side of a hill.
Right now, the, what little bit of a sidewalks on the park side people use for parking to get further out of the road, and on the other side, you can't open your car door unless you bang it into the curbing, so it's, it was...
I mean, safety on Lime Rock Street is a pretty tough sale, Rick.
Well, unless you're getting out of...
I mean...
Yeah, I, we, we probably can talk about this offline.
We're not talking about Route 1 and Camden across the street from the library.
Yeah.
With 10-wheelers, 18-wheelers running down all day long, all night long. That doesn't mean we shouldn't make it safe. You, you just... I mean, I, okay, I mean, safety is safety.
You have to come up if you're gonna speak.
I certainly like to advocate for safety for our, our community, but this project was pitched, it's a library. It's like, the whole issue is the library, can it stay in the village or go out to RES? And so to say, well, now we need, we do need more community parking for the village, is a separate issue, but it's gotten tagged on with a library, and the voters, I think, voted for a library, but it just feels like it's getting a little blurry now, like, well, because I think it is gonna be village parking for other events. So, but I think it's ridden in on the coattails of the library, and there's a little bit of a misrepresentation in that, that doesn't feel quite fair. But I certainly think that it's a legitimate issue, but I, I think the way the voters are gonna perceive it, I think is important to...
Well...
I think also, sorry to interject as a member of the library committee, I mean, I think it's very clear that, you know, obviously, the location, RES, which I consider also to be part of the village, but I think, as your comment suggests, a lot of people don't. This is a very contentious decision in terms of location of RES versus the village, and as you know, one of the main concerns by, voiced by people who wanted to see it at RES was parking. And those people were extremely concerned that the current location would pose a significant problem for parking, and many felt that it already did pose a significant problem. And the goal for the new project, among other things, I think, is for the library building itself to be able to expand its capacity to host events. And I think the concerns about the parking are, are legitimate, and we're kind of running up against some of the difficulties of trying to fit this facility into the space that has been selected. And that's really tough, but I mean, it's, I think, one issue is to get everybody on board to support the bond for June, is that there are quite a few people out there who are currently hesitant, I think, to vote for this project because of this concern about the parking capacity, and some of those people voiced those concerns at the workshop last week. And I, so I, I, I don't think it's the, for, from the, from the perspective of a lot of voters, I don't think that this parking thing is seen as being tacked on to a library project, where I think for a lot of them, it's an integral issue and part of their biggest reservation about voting for this is, you know, the view on the parking.
That's why I understand as well, but it was getting started to get talked about as a justification for it, that we need it for the Opera House and the restaurants and what have you, so it's like, oh, wait a minute, that, I think...
Well, I mean, from my perspective, make no mistake, this is parking that's being developed for the library.
Yeah.
But right now, or, well, when the library was in town before, and there was parking that was considered kind of library parking, as it was nearby, but in the evening, when the library wasn't open, other people used those spots. Some of you may have even parked up there this evening. So I think it's unrealistic to think that the spots won't be used at other times, but if we, this, this is parking that's been developed for the library project to address the concerns of the folks that Cheryl just talked about, which is library patrons concerned about adequate parking and, and quality parking for the library. Did you have something you'd like to say?
I shared last week, and I still haven't changed my opinion, I think the RES site's much better, because you have places, you can have off-street parking, you're not gonna have the, the light shining in somebody's house. You can have more off-street parking, you can have more ADA spaces, because I still think one space is not adequate. The population of Rockport is not getting younger, so that's one of the big concerns I have. And, and you're not, I've walked the property of RES, and I'm not a landscape architect, I don't play one on TV, but I don't see the, the water issues that you're gonna have with the stream rebuilding, that you're gonna have to do if you're gonna put this in. And certainly, if you're going to choose this location, you have to, in my opinion, it just, it'll be cheaper and make more sense to prepare the entire site before you start building, because otherwise it's just stupid and a waste of money. And I have no problem paying money for a good library, and I think a library should be a destination for a town. That's another reason why I prefer the RES site, because you have higher visibility. You don't have to be concerned about people saying, but it doesn't feel like a neighborhood if you make a brick front, because the other town buildings are brick, and, you know, it could look kinda like, like Union Street, but not really. So, again, I, I'm not opposed to spending money for a new library, and I, I think it's, it's very important. I've lived in two other locations where we had the same discussion about when it came time to, what do we do with the library, because the current structure we have isn't fulfilling the need? What do we need to look for for the next 50 years? Because we want this building to be able to service our community for at least 50 years, and we don't know techno, you know, technology-wise, what's gonna happen in 50 years. It's gonna be more than just books. In both of those locations, they ended up moving to a newer location because they could offer more off-street parking, state-of-the-art, they had room for expansion. It was within a quarter mile of both locations, they had sidewalks, it was closer to schools. And in both cases, even though there were a group of people who said, I really liked the old spot where it was, and I kinda miss that, the overwhelming success of more people coming to the library, and I think it is a situation where if there are more spaces, you will have people come more often. Part of the reason why I had a hard time coming to this library is because the times that I could come, it was very hard for me to find a space to park. And, and I, I think for a lot of people, it's like that. So I, I do think parking is an issue, I think safety is an issue. I've seen people trying to navigate when they've got a toddler and a baby in a car seat, and trying to steer everybody safely. So I think you're wise to think about being able to provide safe parking, and as for people parking, you know, after hours or something, if you're gonna have a hotel going along the harbor, the other spot where you could park, which is down below, will be taken up by people who are staying at the hotel. So in essence, you're gonna lose all that parking that you currently have now. So if you want to attract people to the village who aren't just staying at a hotel, you're gonna have to be able to buy places for them to park, because most people these days park or drive when they go from point A to point B. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know whether you walked in late, but we did, Will talked about a second handicap spot being able to be found as well. Yeah, because we are, there was a part in the plan where we can add another handicap spot, which was a concern that was voiced last week. Any other thoughts, comments, conversation? Well, I mean, I'll say thank you again to everybody who came last Monday, because it was a terrific turnout. You need to come up and use the mic if you're gonna speak.
Did that change a little bit from last week, where the...
Get, get to the mic, please, because everybody at home can hear you.
I was wondering...
And you are?
I'm Jen Porter, Rockport resident. It looks like maybe you shifted a little bit the exit for that, for Lime Rock Street, the lower Lime Rock, or not?
Right here? Nope.
No, it's the same spot, okay.
Last week, yeah.
So I, I was chatting with the architect after the last meeting, I believe, but I really worry about that exit spot there, in terms of it being a safe place. Have, have you guys actually stood there and seen the vantage points for the...
Yeah, in fact, there's been a lot of, I mean, we don't have a lot of options. If you slide this up further, you quickly lose visibility around the corner for people coming up Central Street. And if you, coming down Union Street, and you're going to turn in here, you've got a relatively short distance, too. So it's definitely a balancing act. But we've reviewed this with DOT, and I've also sent this to, for peer review. So I took it up, you know, on myself to send this to a traffic engineer, somebody that does intersection designs all the time, they used to work for DOT. It's Goll Palmer, Randy Dutton is known as one of the better traffic engineers in the state. I've sent this to him to have him double-check, make sure I haven't missed anything, make sure that it's in the best location possible, and that it meets all the DOT standards. I'm gonna get a report back from him on Wednesday of this week.
Has he actually, has he actually been to the site?
Absolutely, absolutely. And we've done some survey work there, too, and measured site distances in, in every direction.
Did you get any, did you get any data on how many accidents have actually already happened at that intersection?
Surprisingly, very, very few.
Very few.
And part of that is because it's such a screwy intersection, and people aren't sure what's going on, and they have to slow down. I mean, I've seen, just in the last year that I've been paying attention, a ton of close calls. I mean, I come through here a couple times every day on my way home and, and to work. And even when I'm coming down Union Street and wanna turn onto Russell or into Lime Rock, I'm never quite sure of the best or safest way to do it. I really have to look to see where other cars are coming from at the time, and sometimes it may be taking the uphill side, and sometimes it's taking the downhill side.
Right.
But I think, I think that confusion and just the way the village is and the hills, people tend to go slow through there, which is why there's not many accidents. But Goll Palmer actually had somebody sit there for a day and, and count cars coming from every direction, and to get a feel for what was happening at that intersection. So we do have a fair amount of data there, and I can tell you this, the first time I called DOT and said, hey, we're looking at this intersection, the response was, well, it's about time. I mean, they knew exactly what I was talking about and exactly that circle area there that they're anxious to see changed. Even though there hasn't been any intersections, I mean, they sit there and watch it, too, and realize that it's just not good. So this isn't set in stone yet. We still have some review left to do, but this is kinda what... But this is kind of what everybody has looked at.
I'm, I'm, I go through that intersection many, many times every day because I live right there. I walk my dog in that park a lot. And I stand there at that location thinking about, what would I do, you know, how would it be? And, and it's the coming down from Graffums to make a left-hand turn when you can't see what's coming around you on that corner. I mean, it's, where the current stop sign is, if you're going to go down through the village or up towards Graffums, you actually have a vantage point of both, both directions. And you don't from that other place. So if you move that hand just a little bit in there, so your cars, imagine you're nosing out.
Yep.
You cannot see from that location. And if you're coming down Union from Graffums and you want to turn in there, you, there is no way to see what is flying around that corner at you. So I.
How much does the narrowing up of the intersection down at the lowest point there?
Oh, right here?
And the bump out there, up, just up to the north, further up there? How much does that have for a slowing, you know?
Well, the reason, the reason this one was put in was so that it would slow people down coming up Central and it wouldn't make it, you know, a real, you wouldn't have the tendency to want to pick up speed once you got there and started making that turn onto Russell. You know, and this, again, this here is for the same reason, to try to get people as they're coming through this intersection to slow down. I hear what you're saying.
I hope that when you do talk to the person who's going to review this, that you say, A, this is a very low accident area.
Oh, they're the ones that did the research and they've looked at how many accidents there were, what kind of accidents there were. There's not many.
And that's what I'm saying, is that it's like, there's something that works about it. As much as it's chaotic and there's a little island in the middle, there's something about it that is functional. And I think that that's important to recognize. And then also that you are creating a blind turn in two different directions, totally blind turn. And I, I mean, my kids play in this area. I'm really tuned in to this particular junction. And what that looks like to me is a more dangerous option than we already have. And I've stood right there for quite a bit of time and analyzed it, feet on the ground. And it's, I don't, I don't see it as a good option.
Well, I can tell you one of the reasons why the DOT doesn't like the way it is now, and that's this pedestrian crossing right here.
Mm-hmm.
Because what happens, it's a long ways, for one thing. It's a weird, long diagonal crossing across two lanes of traffic that it's hard to predict when people are going to go on which one. And what DOT mentioned was they've seen people sitting here being unsure of when it was safe to, to go.
Yes.
And so that's one of the, the big things that they don't like. And we haven't been able to come up with a better way to, to solve that. But they really dislike this diagonal crosswalk across such a strange traffic pattern.
I'm wondering if they're, like, if Lime Rock came straighter down, you know, and made it sort of more of a T at the bottom, upside-down T or something. I don't know. I just think it needs to be looked at.
Jen, I, I live off of Russell Ave. And when I come from Ingerhams down, where the hand is, there's the island. I, because of the blind corner, we have to come down and go around the lower end of the island onto Russell Ave so we can see what's around the corner. By shifting Lime Rock further up, then you have an added distance which will benefit the timing of moving on and in and out of Lime Rock Street where the new knob, as they call it, or Doug calls it, now encompasses the island itself. And that allows at least the passage of cars going in and out of Russell Ave and from Ingerhams, or, yeah, Ingraham's, the access, free access onto Russell Street. So the new design is much improved and.
But you're imagining going to your house on Russell Street. Imagine coming down from Graffums and turning into Lime Rock.
Correct, but the distance.
You cannot see what's coming at you.
Correct, but the distance is further away now from the intersection. Right now, it's too close to the intersection. And you're, a car coming up Central and coming down the other way have more of a tendency of meeting at that spot right now. But you can see where that knob now is. It basically has shifted the entire access to Lime Rock Street further up, which I think.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things, if you're coming down Union Street and you want to turn onto Russell now, you start making the cut right here.
Exactly.
And you can't see well around the corner. But now you've got to come down beyond the corner so that you can see further down before you can make this turn onto Russell. What you're talking about though is if you're sitting here and you want to turn here, it's about at the same point that, that people are making the turn down onto Russell now. I hear you. I mean, this is a, a screwy intersection. There's no doubt about it. And I'm, that's why we've tried to get so many different experts to look at this and make sure that what we do here is definitely going to be an improvement. And the jury is still out to some extent. I'm still waiting for the.
Are there any, are there any pluses to making it one way, one way or the other? With that, what you're proposing?
Well, I think, I mean, there's, there's definitely arguments that could be made for not being able to turn into Lime Rock this way. The negative to that is that means everybody's got to go, if you want to go to the library.
And when they park on Richard's side of the street, they do that anyway.
You know, and that section up there isn't really built for, for a lot of traffic either.
No.
On, what is it, Hughes Street?
Yeah.
And then down by Maisy and Brink's. That's a really narrow, narrow section of street right there.
I guess there's no way to do a mini roundabout there so that, say, if you were coming up Central Street, instead of, you know, bearing to the left, you'd have to go right and then around and then up Union Street.
I don't think that there would be enough room.
Enough room.
Don't think so.
Plus it's got the slope.
Well, I guess part of where I was going with that is, I mean, in, if it were one way, one way or the other, and you were able to make the street not quite as wide as what you're doing now with 14 or 15 spaces, you could make better parking on the other side, on the library side. In other words, if you were one way, everybody would go.
The problem with parking going parallel up or down Lime Rock Street is that the, the road is so steep that car doors close back on you. I mean, that even happens right, right down here. I mean, my car door just did that. I parked just down the street here. I mean, so Central Street's steep too. So that's one of the reasons we parked, we designed this the way we did facing in is I was able to maneuver the, the contour lines such that when you park, you've got the widest distance between those lines as possible. And we could get the, the slope across the car to a little less than eight percent, which is just about what you need to be at to not have your car doors closed back on you.
And I think to address something you were talking about is when you're, when you're coming down Union, turning left onto the new proposed section, you're going to be able, you're not going to have anybody coming off of Russell going towards Camden on Union. They're going to have to go down where you can see them better before they make their turn. The one that you're talking about is when you're coming up around the old Sweets House and going towards Union. So I think in one respect, it will be, you know, quite a bit better. Because you'll be able to see across that nub, as Doug calls it.
Well, I think we're going about the process the right way, which is Will is having the peer review. DOT isn't going to let us do anything that doesn't have the proper site distances, I don't believe. And they have, those are defined.
I mean, the speed limit's low there, so the site distances aren't as much as they would be, say, on Route One.
And I think the traffic calming features of the bump outs are going to help.
Will, have you thought, and, and the architect as well, have you all thought about different possibilities of Lime Rock? And I, I'm curious about, you know, exploring more, either making it one way or even closing it off and moving the library to a more accessible position towards the park. I mean, I think we've talked a lot about, Ben, I know you are really interested in having the park be part of the library. And I don't see how it's any, I mean, it's, there's still going to be a lot of traffic going in between the park and where the library is. And I, I've seen, you know, on the Wednesday afternoons when the bus stops and the kids play in the park and then they get over to the library. And I just wonder, I mean, I think there's potential in the site becoming much more possibly accessible and just user-friendly if we explored the idea of having the library be in a slightly different position, possibly making Lime Rock Street a dead end from the other direction, having a walking path and a bike-riding path that would go up so it would maintain the sort of traditional walking and biking that goes on that street. But just explore a different option for actually having the library be more situated in the park and.
One of the limitations we have is there's a sewer and water line that goes along Lime Rock Street.
I, I, I heard that wasn't a big issue. That's what I was told by.
It isn't if we, if we have the street where it is now. But if you put a building on top of it, it becomes an issue.
Oh, I, I understood that that was not a significant issue.
It depends on what you want to do.
Yeah. I mean, I know everyone's talked for a long time about preserving that park, which I am in full agreement with. But it's not like we have, it's not a big enough park really for kids to be playing ball in and that sort of thing. It's not used in a way that we, I mean, I really want to preserve it and I love it. But I'm just wondering if it, if we could actually have a bigger playing space around the library where you're not crossing a road to get there. And maybe there's a way to design parking that's a little more, you know, workable in terms of doors not closing and people not walking over icy slanted roads to get to the library. I'm just wondering if you guys have explored that idea at all?
I mean, in the, in the last go-around, I mean, this is, this is sort of the best of all worlds that we've looked at. In the last go-around, we looked at four or five different configurations of parking. And this was very similar to what we came up with in that timeframe too. I mean, in that timeframe, we, I mean, we looked at putting the parking way across the other side and rerouting Lime Rock up around. We looked at putting the parking sort of in different ways, like almost turning it into a parking space. This was the best compromise that we could find to sort of keep the park and bring it to life a little bit with the better sort of walkways and the memorial placements and then actually have the parking that we need for the library as well. So, I mean, it's not perfect, but it's pretty close for the constraints we're working under.
One of the things we looked at, you know, the option of making it one way in or one way out, I mean, I, that's, that is an option. What the, the design team looked at was, well, it's better to design it as two-way with the idea that you can always make it one way, but it's hard to go back and make a one-way road two-way, you know, build it big enough so you can make it two-way.
Yeah, but the other thing as far as width goes is that in order to have room to back out of these parking spaces, you, you need that 24-foot wide behind those spaces to turn out. I mean, as far as this go-around and this new charge to, to put the library at this location, we have not spent a lot of time looking at other options. But over the last two or three years, a lot of them have come and gone. And a lot of the feedback was that, that, you know, people just didn't like that location as well as over here. I think some of it has to do with the visibility issue coming up Central Street. Some of it had to do with people that didn't like filling in the park. But even if you put it over there, it still created a difficulty with the intersection. And I hear what you're saying about a dead end. I'm just, I'm not a fan of, of trying to bring everybody through the upper street, back in and back out that way. I just think that's going to create kind of a congested area. That street really isn't.
Oh, I wasn't, no, no, I mean, I.
I was thinking, you know, if, with this building, you put this, move it over and up a little bit, you're creating enormous amount of flat street parking here. The, you know, the, the street with dead end here with a little turnaround. And then you have like all this area for kids to play and, you know, people to access, you know.
Right, but you, you are making that dead end, right? So.
People will come through your property on the backside, right?
No. No, they can't. No, you, you move, let's just say we put this building on top of the road and maybe slightly over there. And you've opened up a lot of parking area here. You can have, you know, possibly more parking along the road over here. And you have one central property that is containing the library. There's no, there's no roads to cross. There's just a lot more to work with here.
And the reason that that plan didn't fly with any of the committees that looked at it was because of the sewer and the water line. Because to move those is very expensive and you can't put the building over it because in case something breaks, then we got to tear the building up to get to fix it. And, I mean, because we looked at some plans that that was in place at when the Ad Hoc Library Planning Committee did it. And that was one of the key factors in, in not really liking that plan because the cost of moving those lines was quite high.
I was in some of those meetings, I'm sure, I do remember people saying, like, if this is what you want to do and you want to create a library that's going to be here for the next hundred years or whatever, like, I mean, that kind of road work does happen.
Oh, no, it's, it's all, it's a money issue.
Anything can happen with enough money.
Yeah, anything can happen with enough money.
I mean, I do remember them saying it wasn't that significant in terms of the, the scope of this project and how to make this really workable. But that was a different time in the process, but.
Yeah, I just was wondering how much you guys had, had really looked at that idea in terms of using the, these two town properties, because they're, they're, they're separate, but bringing them back as one and trying to keep the traffic flow in a, you know, a more, a more user-friendly way around, around this building. I also just wanted to know what the timeline is for more meetings and sort of where you are in the process and.
The next meeting will likely be on the 26th, which is, I guess it's, that's when we'll have the budget, we'll have the budget numbers back by then.
Right.
And so the next meeting will be to take this plan and to go through the detailed cost estimates and see where they land and, and see if they fit within the budget. And if not, what, what adjustments need to be made. So the idea is going to be sometime by early April to have a pretty final concept planned so that the voters have time to think about it before they vote on it in June. Anybody else? Comments, thoughts, conversation? I guess we're through unless somebody else has anything else to say. Thank you all for coming and thanks to Steve and Will and the library committee. And stay engaged.